Good morning, everyone. We'll call to order the Tuesday, March 30th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Gosh, what is this saying? In like a lion, out like a lamb. So hopefully, the rest of the week will be nice and we're going to have warmer weather. Due to the ongoing pandemic, we are going to continue our meetings via in-person. We have some in-person, but also providing it via Zoom for Code Section 21.8.1. With that, I'm going to ask for you to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I've already said the reason why we're providing access via Zoom. With that, I'll ask for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. The move by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next is public comment. First public comment, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to provide public comment today? Scroll through on the Zoom. If you would like to, please raise your hand or hit star nine, or if you're via phone, star six. And I'm not seeing anybody, so we will close public comment at this time. I'd also like to, we have in the office here today is Sandy Fitzgerald, and would like to recognize her for her 11 years of service to Story County. Certainly have appreciated everything that you have done for the county.
Thank you.
Yes, it's been great having you part of the county.
I'm going to miss everyone.
Yeah, I hope you're not. Fill your days.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, last day's tomorrow?
Yes.
See you tomorrow then.
Okay.
Pardon? Don't have a good thing.
No, I'll do my own. I'll be right back.
All right. I thought something seemed a little off, but I'm new at this chair position, you know, so. You want to get? I think I know a place where we could get one for you.
Actually, I think we can get one with a plaque.
Oh, there you go. I apologize for this, Sandy.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, I did you a thing to ask this morning. It's usually sitting up here. Oh, you can award that to Sandy if you guys want a picture or anything. Sure, sure, sure.
If you're open, you can just go up in front of them, watch out for the board, just get it from me. Some of the social.
Sure, sure, sure. So we have a plaque for Sandy Fitzgerald. This is an appreciation of 11 years of leadership, dedication, service to the citizens of Story County in the state in 2010 to 2021.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you like to get a picture of all of us together? And Stacy, would you like to make any comments about this morning?
Not this time. I'll talk tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to?
You want to come right up here?
We can start. We don't have a picture of?
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, certainly.
Appreciate it. Thank you. C.T., bidding one, two, three. I'm going to take two. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you very much, guys.
Oh, and Sandy, here is the cover.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on. We have a proclamation identifying April 2021 as the National County Government Month, and I'm asking if my two colleagues would like to join me in referencing the reading, the proclamation. Sure. Make a start? Sure. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 300 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas communities, counties provide health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more, and whereas Story County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and...
Whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President Gary Moore, NACO is demonstrating how counties matter, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services.
Now therefore be resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Thank you to all who work in county government for your dedication, your support, and your continuing efforts to making Story County great. All right, with that, we'll move on to agency reports, and first we have a...
You guys have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have to.
A motion and a resolution.
Second. Moved in second. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Thank you for that, Kevin Shelley. Now we'll move on to agency reports, and the first one is with the Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I think I saw Haddon on the line.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Good morning, and good morning to you too, Crystal.
Good morning. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. Since I started at the Convention and Visitors Bureau back in August of 19, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to the Board of Supervisors. We were scheduled a year ago, right when COVID hit, to have an opportunity to give you an update, so I appreciate this time. I just want to start out by just talking a few things about 2019 and where we were when, prior to COVID hitting. Ames ranks 10th, or Story County, I should say, ranks 10th in economic impact with $227 million generated by visitors to Story County. That's both overnight and day visitors, and that's from 2019. Story County also ranks 11th when it comes to employment supporting, that employment that is supported by travelers, with over 1,700 workers, and that generates $33.5 million in travel-generated payroll. So things were looking great in 2019. Obviously, COVID made a huge difference in 2020. 2020 was scheduled to be what we call a mega-year for the Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau in that we have events that not only consume all of Ames, but all of Story County and beyond. Boone, Polk County, and so on. Events like Odyssey the Mine World Finals have brought, were scheduled to bring over 12,000 visitors to the area. Farm Progress with over 40,000 visitors for the three-day show. We were also scheduled to have the National Beat Baseball World Series last year, which is an event for the visually impaired, which we have hosted in the past, has been a great event, to bring awareness to those individuals and to bring visitors to the county. So obviously, 2020, we saw a huge decrease in visitors, and just with Ames Hotels, I don't have information on hotels outside of Ames, but just for Ames Hotels, we saw a decrease of over $20 million in revenue for those hotels over 2019 numbers. So that's definitely significant. We were still fortunate that as the year went on, we were able to still host the State USA Softball Event over in Nevada, and we're hosting in '21 in Nevada, the USA National Tournament, USA Softball National Tournament. So things are starting to look up. Moving ahead to '21, we are really excited about some things that we already have in the pipeline that are scheduled for this year. I mentioned Beat Baseball. We weren't able to secure the World Series for this year, but working with the national organization, we were able to create a new event that's going to bring eight teams from across the country. We've got teams from Texas, New Jersey, Wichita, Colorado, that will be coming to Ames for a tournament in July. So we're still able to host that event, and we're looking to host the World Series in the future, hopefully in '24. An event that obviously we were scheduled to host in '21. Iowa Games has been an annual staple to Story County for 30-plus years, and we were scheduled to host the State Games America here in '21. Well, that event has been pushed back to '22, but Iowa Games is still moving forward for this summer, and we host events for Iowa Games, or support events that they host, not only in Ames, but in Nevada, and Gilbert, and Cambridge. There's another one in there too, I know, but we do host things around the county for Iowa Games, so we're excited about that. Talking with the hoteliers, we know that they've got room blocks for wedding groups and other groups that are coming in that are exceeding 2019 numbers. So that's really exciting for '21, and we're working on events, obviously, for '22 and beyond. So just in trying to keep you informed on what's happening and what we're working on, we're going to make an announcement here, hopefully within the week of a new event that we will be hosting for '21. I can't really reveal that now, but you'll be hearing that. It'll be an event that'll bring in over $1 million of economic impact to Story County, and that's for '21. But I do want to remind you that, you know, we have a unique relationship with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Iowa State University. We have a partnership that is like none other in the country. Our partnership with Iowa State is extremely unique in that we are able to work to bring in groups and acquire events from across the country, bring them to Ames and Story County and to Iowa, in representing Ames and Iowa State University. This partnership is extremely important to us, and we are definitely in the minority when it comes to this type of a partnership. Our sister cities and other Big 12 communities are very envious of our relationship with the university, in that we can represent both Iowa State and Ames as we move to try to bring in groups. So with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Any question? No, that's a great report. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much for your time and your support over the years. I know that we don't receive financial support annually from the Story County Board of Supervisors, but you have definitely supported us in different events that we have sponsored and tried to bring into the community, and hopefully we can continue that in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ann for the Central Iowa Tourism Region Report.
Great. Good morning. Thank you so much. I'm Ann Volkabacher. I'm the Executive Director of the Central Iowa Tourism Region, and thank you for the opportunity this morning to share what CITR does for Story County. Our region includes a 35-county territory. We run north to south along Interstate 35 from Minnesota to Missouri, so we have a large territory, and of course, that includes Story County. Our tourism regional system is a successful and proven 30-year-plus partnership that not only includes US counties, but also attractions, events, natural resources, hotels, bed and breakfasts, wineries, campgrounds, just all of those partners that make up our great Iowa travel and tourism industry, along with our partnership with the Iowa Tourism Office at the Iowa Economic Development Authority. We have 100% participation with all 35 of our CITR counties participating. I also wanted to mention that I know Crystal, who's on our Zoom this morning, has been serving as one of our CITR Board of Directors, and we so much thank her for her service, and has also been on numerous committees and highly involved with the region, as well as we have a lot of partners there in Story County, ranging from individual attractions and businesses like Center Grove Orchard, to Ryman Gardens, to Iowa State University through their Rhodes Scholar Program, and other partnerships we do with them, on up to organizations like Prairie Rivers of Iowa, and also our Iowa Magazine even. We also have partnerships with the Ames Convention and Visitors Bureau, and also the Story City Chamber of Commerce. So a lot of folks active and engaged with the region out of Story County. I wanted to ask, I sent a packet of information, and I wanted to confirm that that was received because I'll reference some of those documents real briefly this morning.
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Well, there's a snapshot on this one we'll hand out that talks a little bit about the region, how we're set up, but I think it's important also for you to know that some grant funding and things returns to Story County through your involvement. We have a scholarship program, and in 2020, we funded three different scholarships to entities in Story County, two to staff at the Ames CVB, and one to staff at Prairie Rivers, and those scholarships were to attend the Iowa Tourism Conferences. We're in the middle of our application process for 2021, but we already have a couple of applications in this year for the 2021 conference, so we're excited to see that engagement, and also the conference this year is looking a little different. Folks from around the state can join in person, or they can join virtually, and so that's exciting to see the adaptations for that type of training. We also, through Central Iowa Tourism Region, administer the Iowa Tourism Grants in our region. We provide reviewers for that program. When the projects are awarded, we write those contracts for funding, and then of course, we monitor those grant recipients to make sure that they comply with the grant requirements, and those grant funds are actually paid out through our office upon completion of the project. And I'm excited to share with you that two projects out of Story County this year received funding in 2021. $5,000 is going to the Ames CVB, further driving and walking to our apps of ISU and Ames, and also another $5,000 to Prairie Rivers of Iowa for their Lincoln Highway Heritage Byway informational guides. So so excited to work with those two organizations to fulfill the requirements of their grants and see those two great projects happen. Last year, we administered a $2,700 grant to Prairie Rivers of Iowa, and they did a multimedia production that featured the Lincoln Highway Corridor Breweries, Wineries, and Distilleries, and that was just a really neat project to see completed. So beyond the grant and scholarship funding, we also offer a lot of other special projects and professional development. There should be a handout in your packets. It's got primarily orange shading and things. It talks about our special projects, professional development. We do some career development and mentoring, and also promotion, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of those. I know our time's limited this morning, though, but we very quickly last year about this time transitioned to online training opportunities with the pandemic, and so we did a lot of webinars, everything from how to shift your marketing efforts due to the pandemic. We also held a day-long hospitality and business recovery summit. We've done panel sessions. We also held a session with an internationally-known expert in travel and tourism, Roger Brooks, on marketing in uncertain times. And next week, we have a customer service training webinar planned, and so we're really excited. All of those opportunities are offered free of charge to our industry, and we've also had over 100 registrants for some of our webinars. So while we are excited to get back into meeting in person when people are feeling more comfortable with that, we also are looking at ways that we can continue to offer those virtual opportunities for those that maybe that works a little bit better for, so we're excited for that. I know that the last time we talked, we talked about a pilot program that we did along with Iowa State University and Central Iowa Tourism Region. We piloted a guide training and certification program there with Story and Boone counties two years ago with great success. Through that partnership, we certified over 50 industry members. They achieved professional guide certification, and over 150 people attended a day-long workshop. It was such a great success that we're planning to continue this program in 2021, but it's one of those trainings that is best suited for an in-person meeting, so stay tuned. We're excited to gather in person and share that great information, plus our trainer, who's with Iowa State University, actually goes out to the attractions and businesses to do that one-on-one certification there in their business. We offer all of that at a very, very affordable price. The certification was $50 the last two years ago, and I believe the registration fee for the meeting was like $10, and that even included their lunch. But that type of training and certification usually would be well over $1,000 to $1,500 with other programs, so we're really excited to provide that on a local basis to folks in Story County and all around the region. So again, knowing my time's limited, I want to highlight just a couple of our promotional activities. In that packet, you should have had a copy of our travel guide. It is actually our 2020 travel guide. We're anxiously awaiting our 2021 from the printers, so that should be back here any day now, but we're really excited to share that with you. It features our attractions, the county, state, and federal campgrounds, trails, and golf courses that are open to the public in our 35-county region. And then of course, we also feature hotels, dining, and retail, but those listings require that those individual businesses be a member. So as you look through that guide, some of that chart information, that's why some of those listings are limited. I will share with you that our requests for information are up this year. We feel like people are really planning ahead and planning where they're going to go visit, and so we're excited to have that new updated guide available soon. I also wanted to highlight our Travel Iowa Marketplace. That's a group travel trade show that we've planned and coordinated through Central Iowa Tourism Region for over 20 years, and it brings together Iowa destinations, attractions, individual hotels, with those that plan the motor coach or bus tours. You might think of those as like the bank club groups, or the church groups, or senior groups, other groups that travel around together, and it's really in a very affordable way for those destinations in our region and all across the state to meet one-on-one with those that plan the bus tour groups, and we've seen that a lot of them experience a great return with those appointments and those conversations that take place at that event. Lastly, I wanted to highlight that we're very excited to have a booth at the Iowa State Fair this year. Will be set up at the Varied Industries Building and sharing information with visitors about the many things that people can do in our region. We've heard from some of our partners in the past, places like this Boone and Seaning Valley Railroad, that they've even had visitors that they talked with at the fair one day, and they see them a couple days later up there at the railroad. So it's exciting to see that, you know, immediate turnaround, but we also know that people are gathering up information and looking for things to do maybe at that fall or the following year, so we're excited to get information into the hands of folks at the fair about all the great things they can do in central Iowa. We do open it up to our entities with the counties, the attractions, the groups across the region, to help us staff our booth at virtually no cost to them except their time and travel. We even give them tickets into the fair along with a parking pass, and then they have the opportunity to interact with visitors at the fair, and many of those places wouldn't be able to afford either to be at the fair on their own financially as an individual exhibitor, or the heavy lift that staffing a booth from nine to nine, 11 days of the fair takes. So it's really an excellent opportunity for those entities to have some time and share their information with fairgoers. I guess I'll just refer you to the rest of the handouts that you might review at your convenience that gives you a more complete picture of what we do and our programs, but thank you so much for your partnership and involvement in the region through Story County, and do you have any questions for me?
Questions? No, it doesn't look like any questions. Thank you for your presentation today and the material and outreach. I do think from what you're saying is there's probably a lot of people that are, after this past year, are looking at destinations to go to and may not be ready to go outside of Iowa, but just remembering what's available in Iowa and to go to those locations. So thank you for all that you've done in that regard.
Great, and that is so true. We found that, you know, Iowan's traveling within Iowa or border states coming into Iowa, but it's really nice to see people getting out there and seeing all that they can do in their own great state.
Well, thank you for joining us this morning.
Thanks.
All right, next we'll move on to consideration of minutes. We have the three March 23rd minutes. Their motion? Merkin moves, Faisal seconded, and Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next is consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel action?
So moved. Second.
The move by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next is consideration of claims. Is there a motion?
And will approval of claims as presented?
Second.
The move by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything from consent today? No? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Aye, moved. We approve consent agenda as presented. Second.
The move by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. All right, that takes us to, looks like, public hearing item. Discussion to vacate and clear the record of a portion of Story County's secondary roads, Jackson Street, Boone Street, and 180th Street. Good morning here.
Good morning. Okay, we've got three roads we're going to hold hearings for today. There's no action by the board other than the hearing itself, but action will take place next week, so he is bringing up a presentation for me here. First is the code section. Power to vacate is given to the board by Section 306.1. Any jurisdictional road that we have control over, we have the power to vacate. Next slide. Vacation statute. A county may vacate part or all of an official plat that has been conveyed to the city or county, or dedicate to the public, which is deemed by the governing body to have no benefit to the public anymore. A city or county shall vacate by resolution following a public hearing, and the vacating instrument shall be recorded. The city or county may convey the vacated property by deed, or may convey the property to adjoining proprietors through the vacation instrument, and that's what we plan to do with the resolution. Will include language that conveys the property by resolution next week. Vacation must follow statutory procedures. Procedures to vacate and close a road must be conducted according to the code, which provides an opportunity for interested persons to object and claim damages. provides an opportunity for interested persons to object and claim damages. Now, anyone receiving notice, go ahead, one more. Anyone receiving notice may appear and be heard at the hearing. Any abutting landowner can file a claim for damages up to the date of the hearing, so no action can be taken on it today because they have till the end of today to submit a claim for damages. Really, the only ones with valid claims are the ones that have occupied homes on abutting land to the road being vacated and who will also be landlocked. And there shouldn't be anybody in any of these cases. The public hearing will be open in a few minutes for public comment and submission of claims for damages if any. And already talked about, there's no, should be no landlocked properties, so it should not be the case here. Lastly, at the next meeting after the hearing, the board may pass the resolution to vacate the roads. The resolution should include the wording, "Subject to the right of the utilities to continue possession of any easement existing at the time of the vacation." So there are some utilities in these roads, but they continue to hold their easement after we vacate. And then the resolution is recorded. So this step is planned for April 6, next week's board meeting. Then, any damages determinations can be appealed to district court within 20 days after the order is final. So the first one, this is the Old Town Platte. I don't know the age of this, but Iowa Center used to be a platted town. The two roads we're talking about are Jackson Street here and Boone Street down here. Next one, this shows what it looks like currently. This is Highway S-27 going through Iowa Center and the gravel road 295 coming through. This is the Jackson Street right here we're planning to vacate, and then Boone Street's this little stub down here. Starting with Boone Street, this is the section right here we'd like to vacate. This has already been vacated, and it's part of this property down here. I'm not exactly sure why it was done that way, but so that's privately owned. This is still county. The south half of the road has already been vacated and turned over to this property owner. I'm not sure when that happened, but it's already happened. So we're just dealing with the north half of existing road, and that was requested by the property owner here. Here's a picture looking to the west. This is the roadway we're looking to vacate. This is the south half that's already been vacated. There's some irregularities in the distances and widths and stuff here that we requested that this landowner have a land survey done and pay to have that done. We don't normally do that, but this one had some question marks, and it didn't come out to exactly the 33-foot width is why we had it surveyed. There's some irregularities in that, but it's taken care of by the plat here, so we have an actual plat of what's getting vacated. I'll move on to the other one before we open the hearing. This is Jackson Street. These are actually gravel roads that we maintain still with our motor grader in town. Some properties have changed hands and combined, and houses have changed, so there's really no longer a use for this road here. It's also a bit of a hassle for a motor grader to try to turn around. Both these intersections are somewhat lined along S-27, so it's difficult for the motor grader to operate in there, so it'll make it much easier to maintain. And full disclosure, the person requesting this vacation is the motor grader operator in the district, and he lives right here. But there's no conflict that it should be doing this for whoever requested it. So this will be left open, so he'll be able to maintain it and get it turned around. But so the request did come from this property owner, but this property owner also signed. I usually get everybody to sign off before I bring it to the board to make sure everybody's on board before we get to this point. A picture of that. Next slide. This is looking to the east. This is the roadway. So when we vacate it, it'll be split right down the middle, so this half will go to the south property owner, and this half will go to the north property owner. This is the plat we drew up of that 33 feet and 33 feet will be vacated and given to the adjacent property owners. As I mentioned, initiation of this process was by request from landowners. The board passed a resolution to set the hearing for today, March 30. We sent copies of all the notices of the hearing to the adjacent owners, the utilities, and the DOT by certified mail. And we've also published the notice in the Tribune, the Beta Journal, and Tri-County Times on March 18. It's a copy of the notice. Just lastly, you can scroll through these. The types of land that are typically involved when we vacate, this one falls into this category, all unincorporated town or village, and keep going. So therefore, we recommend that the board quit claim deed to the adjacent property owners preserving existing utility easements on the property. So at this point, we can do these one at a time, starting with Jackson Street. You can open up the hearing for public comments at this time.
Okay, so we'll open up the hearing for public comments at this time. If there's anyone in the meeting room here or being zoomed that would like to make public comments, please either raise your hand or hit star nine to unmute yourselves.
And this is specifically on Jackson?
Just for Jackson Street.
And this is specifically for Jackson Street that we're referring to at this time. Wait just a couple seconds, we're seeing nobody. Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at this time for Jackson Street.
Okay, you can go ahead and do Boone Street.
Next, we will open up the public hearing for Boone Street. Again, same protocol. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise hand on the zoom or hit star nine. Wait just a couple seconds. See if there's anyone that would like to make comments on Boone Street. And I'm not seeing any, not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing on Boone Street.
Last one, I'll give you a little background information on before we open up the hearing. Can you go back to the presentation? Last one is 180th Street, which is requested by Mike Cox, Conservation Director, by McFarland Park. That's a little small, but here's McFarland Center right here. Our pavement ends, I think, about right here. He would like to put a gate to keep people from coming back to this area back here. The screen line is the public roadway still, goes all the way over to the I-35 DOT right away. Next slide zooms in a little bit. This is the main drive to the McFarland Park Center. So he'd like to put a gate right here. Our pavement currently ends here, and that's gravel, so we'll vacate it at this stretch. We cannot put a gate on the public roadway, so the gate will be just on the closed portion. So we have Story County property on the north side, and the south side is currently Natural Heritage Foundation property. And Mike has talked with them as well, so that's what Mike would like to do here. And the last one's just a picture of the plat. There's a section corner right about where the pavement ends, but we're going to go 100 foot to the west and vacate all the way to the DOTs existing right away. So if there's no questions, you can open up the public hearing for 180th Street.
Question? Well, does he make a comment? There's nothing there except the county property, the conservation property. There's sheds there, correct?
There's the sheds, and then there's the astronomers, astronomy group meets up. I don't know if that's owned by Story County or what that is out there.
We don't have any.
Yeah, I assume that's owned by Story County. Mike would know that.
And did you say there was a DOT?
It just, the road goes to the DOTs right away line on I-35. Yeah, so that's where our vacation would end.
Got you. Any other questions? Is there a reason why the gate is so far up the pavement? Why the gate isn't just right there where the pavement ends?
Can you go back a couple slides? Do you see if Mike's on or not? This is where Mike wanted it located, so I probably can't answer that. This is based on where he wanted it to go.
I was just wondering if there was, yeah.
And I guess it would be that there's no reason for anybody to go the extra feet down the road, so you kind of tried to get it as close to their current driveway as possible. Because what, the only thing you're going to do is go left into that driveway to the north.
Yeah, there's probably enough room. People could turn around if they didn't want to turn into the main drive, so we got room for them to turn around.
Get back up into the DOT. But to put it any further down, there's no reason for anybody to go down that road.
Sure, sure. I just wasn't sure if there, like I said, there was some technical reason for having it there. Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing for 180th Street. Same as before. Hit the raise hand function if you'd like to speak or star nine to mute yourself to speak on 180th Street for the public hearing. I'm not seeing anything. Leanne, just making sure. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing on 180th Street.
I have just one technical question on the first two.
Okay.
Is the term, the name Iowa Center a part of the legal description and part of any documents you're going to be bringing back to us next week?
Yes, that is how we, they're described as blocks of Iowa Center in the legal description, so yeah.
In your announcement, your ad, you had center spelled C-E-N-T-R-E, and I've never seen it spelled that way before.
That's how, that's how we believe it's spelled. I'll double-check that, but we show it spelled that way. It seems odd, but.
Wikipedia shows it with an E-R.
Does it?
Iowa Center, Iowa with an E-R, and all maps show it as an E-R. That's why I just wondered, and it might be in the legal description it's R-E, but I've never seen it that way before.
That's how it shows up. Trying to see if it's original.
I have seen it spelled that way before, but, but not very often.
I got cut off on the top.
DOT is E-R.
Yeah.
But it's whatever's in the legal description. I just say, yeah.
Yeah, we'll double-check that. I think we have it correct.
Might be something you might want to make sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. And let me know if you get any comments the rest of the day. If not, we'll probably just put the resolutions on the consent agenda for next week.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Next, we move on to additional items. We have discussion and consideration of five-year secondary roads construction program.
Go ahead and open that one, Leanne. I have something afterwards anyway on that. We held our workshop, I think, three weeks ago with a five-year program. I have not received any comments since then from the public for possible changes. I don't know if the board had any. If not, I won't run through the entire presentation again, but I do have it here if you have specific questions on it. We do have to have the program approved and into the DOT by April 15, and same with our DOT budget, which was on the consent agenda.
The only thing I would know, and I told you this already, and it wasn't necessarily in response to the five-year program, but I got a call from constituents just the other day and wondered if we were considering paving 180th east of Highway 69. And I explained to the person that it wasn't in the five-year plan right now.
It was in that wish list of items that we'd like to do. And as we talked, that first mile wouldn't be so bad. It's flat and straight, but the second mile or two is just.
Narrow and, yeah.
Take a lot of grading to bring it up to a paving standard, and it'd be very difficult and expensive, but it's on our wish list.
I know there's more traffic on that, but I also know there's more tra, higher counts on other places.
Yeah.
So.
And we built that nice new bridge over the Skunk River there because we know that's highly-traveled road and could technically be paved if, and use that bridge, so that's a possibility if we ever came up with the funding to pave that road.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have not heard from anyone on any concerns or questions.
Okay. I was just going to point out a couple things that are somewhat program-related. First, I've seen an email today about the RISE project. We changed that a little bit for funding the 13th Street, 220th Street paving. Moved it to a local development project from an immediate opportunity project, which is a recommendation of the DOT. They apparently do that quite often at this stage if they think it fits the criteria for local development. What that would do is it'd do away with the job creation requirement, and strictly goes on the development itself. That development needs requirements, they pay for 50% of the road improvements, which would be more than what the other grant had. So they just switched that internally. We don't have to submit anything else, and they're fully aware of the circumstances with possible annexation coming up by Nevada or even Ames if Nevada doesn't. But they said it's fine to move forward, and they should find out about that in April DOT Commission meeting, so should find out soon. And then, then we can kind of reevaluate, because we're not committed to anything at that point. But if it gets approved, we can decide to move forward at that point or not. We're committed when we actually let the project, which would be probably next December or January. And then lastly, I just quick comment on, we have a little zering stub of pavement in FY22. The DOT is currently, they've already led a project on Highway 65 all the way up into Hamilton County, so that contractor will be on site this summer. We might try to take advantage of that and let our project earlier, since he'll be on site anyway, and capture some of the cost benefit of the contractor already being there. But I'll update for on that later. That's just something that came up last week. But other than that, yeah, nothing has changed, so I'd recommend board approve the five-year construction program.
Okay. Any additional questions for Darren?
No. Approval of the five-year construction program.
Right second. Been moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Teddon's aye. Great. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have discussion and consideration of approving the job description and headoring of a position for fiscal year 2021 for the community services. Carla, I think you're on the line. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning, Board. So today, we're bringing this request to you. This position has been budgeted for in the FY21 budget, and my understanding is we need approval for this position at a regular board meeting. So we did work with Alyssa regarding the job description that is before you today. This position, as you know, we've been working for some time on a centralized intake process for rent and utility assistance. So now we're to the point where we are ready to fill this position. We've been using the process for some time now with individuals who are potentially eligible for us through general assistance. And in order to take this any further, we really feel we're to the point where we need to get this position filled in order to serve more individuals. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have one question, and so when you're talking about the job description, did you just recently do further updating of the job description then?
So this is a brand-new job description that we created with Alyssa.
They changed the title.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Did you want to touch on that further?
Okay.
That's the only major change since the budget.
Okay, okay, okay.
And am I remembering that you were working with ISAC on some software, some program to make this work?
Yes, we were. They created a service collaboration tool in the Community Services Network database that we use. So we, previously, our general assistance program was in an access database, so we have merged everything over, not necessarily merged, but we've been using CSN since, full-time, probably since May of last year, getting our records updated within that system. I believe we've got all, is it 2019 or 2020 records in there, Aaron, now?
Yeah, we have 2019 and 2020. Yeah, correct.
Okay. So yeah, so we've been using that collaboration tool. Okay, so yeah, so we've been using that collaboration tool with the Salvation Army, Good Neighbor, and The Bridge Home. And that, that was a significant component that we wanted to get built in order to do this. Because then those agencies, we can message them or identify in that tool how much the individual is needing assistance with, what we're potentially able to help with. And then we put that ask out to the other agencies to see what they can do. And as long as we've got our CSN ROI and documents in order, then the, the agencies can go in and look up, look at the information within the system and be able to make a decision on if they're able to help. And then they can respond within the system to pledging the dollar amount that they can provide.
Great. And even, even with the software and the greater efficiencies, this position is still necessary to make it all work smoothly, correct?
We believe so. In order of what, ideally, what the intent is, is to open this centralized intake concept up to not only the individuals that are potentially eligible with us, to, but, but to all applicants. So, so we would be that starting point for somebody to come into. They may not be eligible for us through general assistance, but we're still going to do that coordination with our partners to see what they can assist with. So in order to really pick up that additional piece of it, we need more staff to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Carla, is this person going to carry a caseload? Or will they be interacting with people mostly just once or twice and then?
So our intent would be, it'll be kind of a combination of both, I would say. Our intent would be there, there may be those folks where it is just that, that couple-time interaction with them, getting them through the process. But we also want to work more in-depthly with individuals and offer a service coordination component. So if it's an individual, let's say, maybe, maybe we've seen them historically several times within our office applying for assistance. We want to engage with them to, to do some further. We've developed a, a social history, kind of. We pulled some information from when we used to work with case management. So we've got some additional questions and things that we can ask them to help us try and drill down as to what's going on in their household at that time? And are there other resources and services that we could refer them on to? Trying to help them stabilize within their housing and, and maybe not need that assistance in the future from other agencies. So yeah, so it'll be a combination of both, is our intent.
Wonderful. Thanks. All right, any additional questions? All right, so is there a motion then for the approval of the job description and the hiring of the coordinator position within community services to be filled within fiscal year 2021?
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Faisal and seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Tevin's aye.
Thank you, Board. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Carla. Next, we move on to the consideration of our capital improvements plan for fiscal year 2022 to 2026. Leanne?
Good, good morning. I have the presentation that was given at the work session last December that really did kick off the board's discussion on the capital improvements plan. I'm not going to belabor it and go through each slide, but I do have that available if there are any questions on the background information. I do want to go to, I can get to one slide. So in, as you went through your work sessions through the budget process, the projects that were applied for were discussed in greater depth. And then I came back to the board and the board directed me to release the document for public review. That's really what this screenshot is. And I have actually left it out there for public review up until today. Still not received any feedback from that. But with that, we did go ahead and kind of drill it down with the project description, which is, I'm bringing that up today because that's really not what the, the capital improvements plan that's before you looks like. That's the public review component. But next year, I think we'll try to evolve into something similar to that with the document. But I did, did want to share that with the board because I appreciate getting direction to go in this, go forward with this approach. Because I think it did help inform the general public what the projects were. And maybe that is why there weren't any comments or, or questions raised. So with that, I do have the draft plan on your agenda for your approval. I do have one proposed change though, and that's on page 13. And I just caught it this morning as I was looking at this presentation. When we put this sheet out for public review, the word barriers, when we were talking about the front counter, counters in this building, we replaced that with shields because permanent front counter barriers sounded so ominous. And it really is a plastic, plastic glass shield. So on page 13, rather than permanent front counter barriers, I would recommend permanent front counter shields.
We did make that change in that document, didn't we?
Yes, yeah. And I, it's not, I think, yeah, it says right there. Is that the one? We don't like glasses on.
Yes, it does say permanent front counter shield. It just doesn't say it in this document.
In the draft document, yep.
So being consistent with what was put out to the public is the change.
Yeah. Are you ready for questions?
I was just going to say, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, um, the question I had, and it's kind of how some things are going on this year, maybe it's just a comment, might affect what's in the plan for next year. We do have a space needs study going on right now. And Joby's not here, but we do have that.
He needs a line here.
Joby, where are we on the space needs?
I have to switch gears.
Leanne's going to come up. The reason I bring it up is because what the space needs study finds, what the findings are that might affect some of the things that are in the 22 or subsequent years.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. See, want an update on where we're at with the space needs assessment?
Yeah.
We're finalizing the contract between OPN and the attorney's office. So it'll be in front of the board here in a, open either next Tuesday or the Tuesday following. But I'm getting background information to OPN with some basic floor plan layouts and how many employees are in each office and department right now. So the ball's rolling on it.
Okay, good. And I'm particularly looking at in '22, the county attorney remodel and thinking about the space in the Justice Center and how that space is being used and how the space is being used by the judicial branch. And that's, that's going to be an emphasis then also.
Yes, and that whole project is going to hinge on what this space needs assessment nation is.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So historically, have you gotten any comments?
No. We got one earlier this year. And I don't know if it was, what, what it was exactly in, in response to, but it was something about more bike trails. And that was the only one I've ever remembered seeing. And you said that's the only, you've been here less longer than me.
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I would, I would question for next year how we get that information out and how we could get some, get some more response. And maybe it's back to some in-person meetings around the county or something like that. But I, I think putting it out on social media and on the website isn't getting people's attention on it. I do like the fact that now, you know, when you put together that document, it has some description. Because I, otherwise, you know, what you bring to us, we understand it because we've had discussion about it. But I wouldn't expect the general public to understand what, what something was about, so.
I agree with you. I do too. I also think with the, the smaller document, the five pages, ones where it's back to meeting in person where we could take some of it along as well. So folks can look at it and then have that information as to where to submit their public comments. I know when I was on Zoom meetings and stuff, I would reference it and encourage people to look at it. And all they may have, it didn't have any comments.
And I did send that, was online, a paper version to all city halls. I sent several copies for them to have available for public comment. And we have them downstairs. In fact, I think they're still downstairs as you come into this building. So if we continue to try and look for different ways to get the information out.
Well, we were barrier this year too, because a lot of places were closed.
Yep.
And are just starting to open back up.
Yeah, normally I send them to libraries.
Right.
And I'm very appreciative of libraries continuing to share information.
But still, I've never gotten a comment.
Yeah, yeah. That's still what we have to think about is.
Right.
And I, I will, I'll, I'll reach out to some of my colleagues and see if that's applicable too.
I don't know. Okay, any additional questions for Leanne?
Oh, thanks for your work on that, Leanne.
All right.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I think we need a motion. We need, yep.
I would move to the draft capital improvements plan for FY2022 through '26.
I would second that. Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Tevin's aye. Thank you for all your work on that too, Leanne. We do not have any departmental reports. And next other report is the discussion of a story county jake break ordinance. Darren?
Let me start with, we had a request, it was actually about a year ago now, right before COVID hit, to enact a ordinance prohibiting jig breaks or compression, compression breaks on Riverside Road. I'll bring up a, very far here showing you the location. So we kind of postponed our discussion here through COVID, but it's been about a year now. So we thought, but bring it to the board to at least get a feel from the board if you want us to even explore going down the road of drafting an ordinance or not. First, let me show you the location. This is the area right here on Riverside Road and the curves where the landowners live that are requesting it. The one that requested on the south side, but I know he's working with a lot of the neighbors in the area on this. I would comment, our speed limit starts to reduce. We get a lot of truck traffic from the quarry right here. Any, any of the trucks that want to head westbound have to use Riverside to get out. We, over the years, have lowered the speed limit, starting way back here to 45. So the trucks are starting to slow before they get to the downhill starts about right here. So it's 45 here and I think 35 about here. So they're really slowing down before they even get to those curves. But if you've driven through there, you know, it's fairly steep going down those curves and hills. So those big trucks, even going 35 miles an hour, I'm sure they're still loud and they're downshifting. And so even without jig, jig breaks, I'm sure they're loud. I don't, I don't know how many of them actually used the jig breaks through there. I don't have a good record of that. But that's the area of the request. Reached out to some other counties, actually all 99 counties, to see what counties had ordinances. There was a handful that did have ordinances. But I couldn't find a single one that really recommended doing it. They, for the most part, said they're, they weren't really effective. And the enforcement side, what's the issue? For the article from Woodbury County with the sheriff, but I'll say he would not enforce it even after it was enacted. Nothing's really changed there. I double-checked with Woodbury County engineer and it's, they have a different sheriff now, but nothing else has really changed. It's not really being enforced. And he's got one of the areas right outside of his office window and he still hears the jig breaks. And he gets a lot of calls generated because the ordinance is in place and it's not getting enforced. Enforcement side is the biggest issue here. From my perspective, it doesn't much matter what we do. But I can understand from the enforcement side, it's a very difficult ordinance to enforce. One, you have to be there, you have to have sound meters, and then you have, you have to catch them in the act and, you know, have somebody sitting out there all the time. That part of it gets real difficult. I used one of the other counties as a draft that I put on the agenda just to give you an idea what the ordinance would even look like. But didn't spend much time on that yet. Unless the board wants us to head in that direction, we'd have to hold some hearings if we wanted to go down the ordinance route. What questions do you have for me? Or if somebody from the sheriff's department could be on too, could answer the enforcement side of things?
Yeah, I think that was my biggest question on this, is how do you, how do you enforce it?
Yes. Any other concern is, the county is such a big geographical area. It could never end the number of signs we have to put out there because most of our rural highways are traveled by trucks and jig breaks. So this, that was the other concern. A lot of the other counties pointed out, it just kind of, once you enact it, it just never ends the request and where to put the signs.
Well, that's not the only direction trucks go from Oregon. I mean, they go to the east and then they go either way on Dayton. And there's residences up on stop sign.
I tried to search in the city of Ames ordinance, but I couldn't find any reference to any jig break.
But that's not in it.
I've never seen signs.
North on Dayton is still a county.
Yeah, I was thinking, most of them head south on Dayton or turns to city by before 13th Street. That's.
I see a lot of them going south. And I, I was just wondering, some must go north though to get on 35 that way, or?
Yeah, I'm sure some do.
Yeah. And that would be another place that I could see people saying, well, if there's an ordinance over there, there should be an ordinance up here. Probably not as much going south. The only thing I think of there is the daycare center. They actually kind of like the trucks, kids do. My grandson used to like them. So I don't think they have any, I don't think there's any residences down there, but I would think for country estates, she would have some.
Sure.
People wanting one as well. Is there any safety issue either way with jig breaks? Having an ordinance, not having an ordinance?
I don't think so, other than they won't be able to use them. They can use irregular brakes and I've seen some things where they generally don't like to use their jig brakes when they're going around curves and stuff because it's just the engine is slowing it down. So if they have a trailer or something, there's no brakes on it. So there's a lot more force pushing. They generally like to use their, all their brakes when they're going through curves and they're not in a straight line stopping. So I don't know how many of them are actually using going down those hills. I'm sure there is some. But that's really the only.
What's the advantage to the driveways with jig brakes?
It just uses the engine to slow it down rather than using your actual brakes. But like I said, our, our speed limits are set so far back that they're pretty much, should be slowed down by the time you get to those curves. Talking to the sheriff's office, I know they, they've sat out there and watched them. Even when they're going 35 down that hill, that they're such big trucks that it just appears they're going faster than they really are. So that's another issue with the sheriff. They don't tend to see a lot of speeding through there. It just, it just seem like they are if you sit there because it's pretty narrow curvy gutter section through there.
So you wouldn't have signs on all of Riverside Drive? Why would you start them?
We would just start them probably before, well, I said, the, the 45 speed limit starts quite a ways back before you get to the, that larger subdivision on the left with large lots. Large lots, you know, that subdivision, I don't know what that was called. Probably right about that area and then all the way up to Highway 69.
Is there a thought for another, I mean, traffic study to look at? Are those speed limits kind of accurate or spaced further enough apart or?
We've looked at those many times already in the past. We get a lot of requests. Like I said, it, it seems like they're going faster than they are. But to slow them down even more than 35, it just isn't warranted to there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
35 is pretty slow in a rural area. So yeah, I don't think there's much more we could do with the spacing or anything at the speed limit. They should be getting slowed before they even get to the downhill portion.
A lot of those homes there are newer. They're gone in the last decade, right?
Newer homes or newer residences that have just moved in there, I think is where most of these complaints are newer residences that have just moved there. The one across the street, I know that, that's a newer home. So that's a combination of both. But yeah, I haven't heard anybody that's, from anybody that's lived out there for a long time. It's that, I mean, the quarry's been there. 1950s areas, I could see the quarry's already in operation, so the quarry's been there a long time.
I know we had a dust complaint last, was it last summer or December before we had some dust complaints there?
Yeah, that's an ongoing thing as well. And that they hire an outfit out of Boone that comes and sweeps it every day, multiple times a day. And there's just, and they're working on their tire washing systems. They are doing what they can, but if you sit out there, you can see how many trucks come out of there. It's difficult to control all the dust. And they're doing some more paving internally too, to try to get the dust off before they hit Riverside.
So the truck traffic there is pretty much continuous all day, isn't it? It's not like there's a lot, there's a little bit of time in the morning and a little bit of time in the afternoon or something. It's going all the time.
Yeah, it's non-stop.
So that's why it's difficult to enforce it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I hesitate to, the issue with regulating everything. You know, I might be regulating everything, you know?
And the other, if you advance slide a little bit, just to give you an idea what the sign would actually look like. Pretty straightforward sign. The, the white one, white signs are generally signs that can be enforced, speed limits, stuff like that. Yellow is usually just a warning. There's no teeth behind it. So that'd be, maybe another option is you could just put, I've, I've seen them say, please don't use it. It's like just recommending, don't use it, but there's no enforcement behind it. Don't generally like that idea, but it's something that could be done. That might stop the enforcement side of things, but that white one would be, if you had an ordinance in place, you'd use the white sign.
So who would put up the other signs? Would that be a county sign?
Something we probably could do.
Okay. Or could a, could the resident?
Uh, we, we. Well, that's another issue we're having out there is residents are putting up signs in the public right of way. I need to get that stopped. But Jake brake sign was already put up. I had that taken down, but I've seen another sign went up on the other side. Not dealing with Jake brakes was something else. So we, we can't have private signs in the public right of way. They can request them through me and we do a study to see if they're warranted or not. So that's another issue that's going on. So I don't want to get public, or private signs started in public right of way. There's some liability to that as well.
Miss Lenny did have this quick hand raise.
They're gone.
Never. I think you're being unmuted. I think you're unmuted now.
Good morning. This is Captain Lenny. Was there a question for me?
I'd just like to hear from you.
Well, good morning to the board. Yes, I've been in contact with Darren. This is not the first request over the years to have such an ordinance drafted. I think our position really is, we defer to the board and the recommendations you guys get on whether or not to draft an ordinance. It does come with some certain challenges to enforce. Many of those you have discussed this morning. That is a highly trafficked area. We do get continuous complaints, mostly regarding speed, sometimes the engine noise. We do as much as we can to be proactive out there, but it would be difficult if such an ordinance is passed. It would almost require a law enforcement officer to be there on site to witness it on site. Sometimes, depending on how busy we are on the shift and what we have for manpower, that can also be challenging. And so there would be some challenges with it. It's certainly not an unenforceable ordinance by any means. But if these were expanded to many, many areas throughout the county, it would just add another layer of difficulty in being in, in all those areas when we get those complaints. Outside of that, we treat it like any other ordinance or state code.
So Darren, how you've got kind of this draft here, you're looking at just referencing that West Riverside Road, the Highway 69, whatever, so for now. So if that were a direction we wanted to go, if we're hearing from other residents, excuse me, we'd have to then include other areas.
Yeah, and you could, you could pass an ordinance without any specific locations and then we'd add the locations in by resolution later. And you could continually add them after the ordinance is passed. You wouldn't need the location in the original ordinance at all.
Can we have any of the residents or the person who requested this ordinance on the line? Doesn't look like it.
And, excuse me, have you heard from many of the residents or was it one particular?
It's one particular I, I've been talking with, but he's had a, a pretty big email string. I could see that he forwards it to in the neighborhood. So I know a number of others have been notified and I notified we're having this discussion today at least.
Yeah, I saw the, her email that you told him it would be on the agenda today. So I assumed if you wanted to give us any additional information, you have, has had that opportunity.
You mentioned the private sign issue. One comment another county made is one thing they've done is required the landlord, if, if an ordinance is passed, they, after that point, they still require the landlord to pay $250 for the signs. So the landlords are paying for the signs even though the county will put it up under the county sign. But that's one, one thing a county did to try to limit some of the requests, because they were getting a lot of them sounded like.
Well, any further discussion or thoughts there?
Well, I have some concern about if we opened this up, how many locations in the county we might have. And, and I can think of other places where people would say, well, if there's one there, why not have one here? And then I'm thinking about the, the workload that gives the sheriff's office in terms of enforcement. And that's, that's a concern to me. That's a, a real concern to me. Also, Darren, you pointed out that mine's been there since 1970. So it's, it's not a, you know, something that was.
It's nothing new.
Nothing, nothing new, but, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I also have concerns about setting up a situation where we have an ordinance in place that is not going to be enforced very frequently because it's such a challenge to enforce it. I'm just not crazy about that idea.
What do you think about the idea of, and I don't know how we do it, but the voluntary sign issue? I like the idea in, in terms of the landowners paying for the sign because that keeps it to people who really have a problem. As opposed to just somebody that thinks, oh, the county will do that if, you know, if we ask for it. I'd certainly want landowners to understand that it wasn't, it wasn't enforceable, that the sheriff's deputies would not be coming out and ticketing people. But it would help in terms of awareness. I saw in the email, the person talked about, you know, how it can be very annoying and said, I, I just don't know if the drivers understand that, how annoying it is. Well, if there's something that we could do, I mean, it would take us a little bit. It would take your secondary road crew the time to put up the signs. But is that something that we could do to help at least increase awareness with the drivers? And, and what would we need to do to okay that kind of issue?
And would that minimize the other signs that you're having problems with that are being put in the right of way? Then we've got, got something else.
Yeah. Yeah. And.
And the other thing, I can at least talk to the quarry and see if, I don't know how much control. A lot of these are private truckers that come in there so they don't have control of them. Whether they have any sort of communication with the trucks that often, or they could put out the message and say, hey, at least on Riverside, can we try not to use them?
I'm sure they could give them flyers as they leave.
Could they put a, maybe they could put a sign on the gate so as they're leaving the quarry, the sign, yeah.
I don't know their take on Jake brakes. They might be dead against that, but who knows? I'm sure they want good neighbors too.
You could ask them. It wouldn't hurt anything to ask them.
Right.
What would you need from us to do the voluntary sign?
That's not the type of sign that, you know, takes any official board action to put up, so yeah, it's something.
I was gonna say, if we just, we're just having a discussion, we're saying we wouldn't be opposed at all to offering a program like that to those landowners on Riverside Drive. Is that sufficient for you to go ahead and, yeah? Make sure they know that it's not enforceable.
Yeah, that would be the biggest issue. Even a sign like this can generate those calls, so.
Yeah, you might get more calls because they're just gonna think it's enforceable. You certainly have that. The other option from hearing from you and from Nick Lenny is it sounds like, gosh, you'd almost need to have someone there constantly. And, and if there's other emergencies throughout the county, they're certainly going to prioritize that versus monitoring the sound in that particular, in that particular area.
It looks to me like the person who sent you the emails, I don't know how to pronounce his name, so I won't try, but that he has a good email list here and he could certainly help you get to all those landowners and explain this, you know, if you'd send him an email about this, he could forward it on to them all. And that would get the word out that this is not enforceable, but the county understands. And we're hoping that awareness will help.
Yep, I'd be fine with that as a starting point, you know, seeing.
Yeah, see how that works.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that option. I, I just don't know where we can go on that. I hadn't thought about that, so.
Yeah, that's something, I Googled the Jake brake sign to show you that, and then I saw all these other yellow signs on there. I'm like, ah, maybe that's an option.
Well, then just to keep us updated too, on how that, if that seems to help address your situation.
Well, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, upcoming, upcoming agenda items. I don't know, but I have anything upcoming. Anyone else?
I am going to draft something on our procedure for filling boards and commissions. We've basically been going through interviews again for some of the boards and commissions. And currently, the all three supervisors interview all applicants. And, and sometimes that seems to me like we're taking more time for people than we need to. And also setting up all of those appointments is, is, it takes longer to fill the positions. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna draft something and I, I'll try to get it on the agenda for next week to kind of say, you know, we can all do that and watch, or we could just designate to one, you know, mutual agreement, one supervisor would interview for a set, a set of appointments, vacancies. That's all I have for upcoming agenda items. I'll get that, I'll get that done soon.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Next, we move on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comment, on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. I will open public, the public comment forum. If there are anyone who'd like to make public comment. Please raise your hand or hit star nine. And I am not seeing anyone, so I will close public forum number two. Liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates and announcements. Do you want to start?
Sure, sure. Um, so tonight, I've got emergency management tomorrow. Tomorrow, we've got more VA Commission interviews, retirement open house for CMD Fitzgerald. And then there's gonna be cupcakes there, everybody, so just make sure you got that on your calendar. Thursday, I have Two Rivers Regional Meeting, Alternatives Arrest Diversion Meeting, and Website Committee Meeting. And Friday, I've got a Department recognition in the morning on my calendar.
Okay. In addition to that, I've been working on the Publicizing the Broadband Survey. And we have a, a subcommittee here in Story County that's meeting weekly. And we'll meet Thursday and try to figure out more ways, excuse me. We can encourage, encourage people to take that survey. Or remind everybody that we're one of 11 counties in the Central Iowa Broadband Study. So we will only get as much good out of it as the information we put in it. So please encourage everybody, and we've got a link on our website. Use that in your own social media. And if you see, if there are any other social media accounts, Facebook pages, for example, of some of the smaller towns, try to put a post on those. And I think we will be having a follow-up article in the Tribune as well, which should be helpful in publicizing that. So I have everything, I think almost everything else on my calendar that you do, Supervisor Faisal. And in addition to that, and I think that's probably it for the upcoming week.
And I have as well the interviews tomorrow. I also have, hopefully, to make the tour, the AEDC on downtown Ames on some of their new businesses. I think at four o'clock tomorrow, so I'm gonna try to make that. Friday, yes, have the recognition. I also have a workforce development leadership meeting from 12 to 1:00. And then Monday, I have a morning Herta meeting. It's, it's actually a two-day, but I'm only able to make the one day because we have a board meeting the second day. Kind of looking at some of the gaps in services, and that is an 8:30 till 1:00 meeting. So that will take up all of my morning on Monday. With that, there are a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Heavens, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.